Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We begin our city council as we always do with a prayer and pledge led by Councilman Dan Fitzpatrick.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to live in a country which has free speech and freedom of expression as part of its hallmarks. For our self-governing people, we thank you for this very city, Saginaw, and this council. We thank you for the great staff and the members of our council here. We ask you to bless us tonight and give us your wisdom. Lord, we ask for protection for all of our people, those who are in harm's way, those who serve in our security apparatus, and we ask you to be with all of them, be with the firefighters, the police. And we ask you to bless us tonight. In your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Fitzpatrick, Councilmember Tibbs, Councilmember Bench, Mayor Protem Klock, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Balls and Humphreys are absent, and Mayor Browning.
President.
We have seven members present and two absent.
Before we begin, I'd like to remind the audience to be quiet and refrain from speaking or any other disruptive behavior during the council meeting. Also, for council members, staff, you may want to take our phones right now and make sure they are on vibrate or turned off so it does not interfere with our council meetings. If your phone does go off, we'll please put it on speaker so we can hear who you're talking to and what the conversation is all about, please. We would appreciate that, so. Okay, that scared them off. That's good.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we believe we are now at announcements.
Yes, I do have several. I'd like to remind everyone that the city clerk's office does have absentee ballots available now through Friday from 8:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and will be open this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 o'clock p.m. for absentee voting only. Also, following on Monday, November 7th, absentee voting can take place. However, ballots must be voted and returned directly to the city clerk's office here at City Hall. On Monday, November 7th, you will not be able to leave with your absentee ballot. And a reminder that all absentee ballots must be returned by Tuesday at 8:00 p.m. on November 8th, Election Day, in order to be processed. And remember that City Hall will be closed Friday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans' Day. Also, the city's waste convenience station will be open Saturday, November 12th, to city residents to dispose of items such as building materials, recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. Hours are 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the entrance is off the Holland Avenue, Holland Avenue. Yardway service continues through the month of November. And Mayor, we have proclamations this evening.
Well, before we get to that, announcements, I, next Tuesday is election. Your office has been working very hard to make sure this goes very smoothly, and also for the citizens, that those that need transportation stars will be running all day on Election Day absolutely free. So, we certainly appreciate that, along with the announcements of the upcoming elections and so forth. So, we have proclamation.
Yes, our first proclamation is designating November 15th, 2016, as America Recycles Day.
And I'd like to invite Carol Summers from Mid-Michigan Waste Authority Community Engagement Officer, and Catherine Tesson, Administrative Director. Would you both come up forward, please? And tonight's proclamation is going to be read by Councilman Mr. Dan Fitzpatrick.
Yes, welcome. I'd like to read the following proclamation. Whereas the city of Saginaw recognizes the importance of protecting and preserving our natural resources and adopting conscientious habits that will bring about a cleaner, safer, and more sustainable environment, and whereas in the greater Saginaw County, Michigan area alone, nearly 6,000 tons of recyclables were diverted from the landfill last year, and whereas to focus public attention on the importance of recycling, Mid-Michigan Waste Authority has joined nationwide efforts to celebrate America Recycles Day. And whereas participating in the America Recycles Day awareness campaign is one way area communities can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing recycling and buying recycled products, and whereas our local leaders are partners in spreading the word about the excellent programs they have established, the importance of buying recycled products, and the benefits of investing in recycling by small and large businesses, and whereas the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority and its member communities encourage all citizens, businesses, schools, and organizations to pledge to focus on recycling participation and to increase the purchase of recycled products every day of the year. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, hereby proclaim November 15th, 2016, as America Recycles Day in the city of Saginaw, and encourage all citizens to recycle and to increase their purchases of recycled products. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this first day of November in the year of our Lord 2016. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor, Councilpersons Floyd Klock, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Daniel Fitzpatrick, John Humphreys, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and Timothy Morales, City Manager. Congratulations.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority, I'd like to thank the city council for supporting recycling efforts and giving us this proclamation recognizing America Recycles Day. I'd also like to take a moment to let you all know that we recently concluded our special waste drop-off season. We had 23 events running from June through September for electronic waste, paint and other non-toxics, and then hazardous household waste. We had just under 2,000 cars come from Saginaw County. Residents from all of our 35 member communities were represented, and we believe will come in at just around 60,000 pounds of special waste materials that were diverted from the landfill. So, it's a very, very good year. And then, since we're here and it's November, which means it's the holiday season, we wanted to leave you all with a poster about for the second year, we're running our Holiday Lights Recycling Drive. There are 10 different locations in Saginaw County where residents can drop off their broken or unwanted holiday lights. Last year, we diverted over 1,000, or excuse me, 2,000 pounds of holiday lights, one ton, from the landfill, and were able to make a donation to the Can Council as a result. And the program runs from November 15th through January 15th. So, can we hand these out, or should I just leave them there? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next proclamation is designating November 17th, 2016, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day.
And I'd like to invite Beth Ann Swears and her husband Steve to receive the proclamation, the Proclaiming Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. And Councilman Clint Bryant, will you do the honors of reading that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation. Whereas in 2016, an estimated 50,000 people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and over 40,000 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer occurs when abnormal cells in the pancreas grow out of control, forming a mass of tissue called a tumor, pancreatic cancer has the lowest survival rate of all major cancers. Merely 2% to 10% of those diagnosed survive more than five years after diagnosed. And whereas the cause of most pancreatic cancers is unknown, and symptoms are usually subtle, often attributed to less serious medical conditions, early detection is vital. Patients diagnosed in the time for surgery are more likely to live five additional years and beyond. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Saginaw are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. And whereas on November 17th, 2016, we will show the world we are in it together. This is the day we will unite and make our voices heard by showing the world we are in this fight together. We hope to save lives and create a brighter future for the people around the globe. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, hereby proclaim November 17th, 2016, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the city of Saginaw, and encourage all citizens of Saginaw to come together to draw attention to pancreatic cancer and highlight the need for greater awareness, funding, and research, and most importantly, to encourage and instill hope for individuals and families battling this dreaded disease. As we unite together, we will win the fight against pancreatic cancer. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this first day of November in the year of our Lord 2016. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor, Councilpersons Floyd Klock, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Daniel Fitzpatrick, John Humphreys, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, also signed by City Manager Timothy Morales.
Well, on behalf, on behalf of my family and the pancreatic cancer community, we thank the city for getting involved and raising awareness for this lethal disease. Personally, my husband was diagnosed in April of 2015, and he has lost a mother and a cousin both to this disease. So, it's very important to us to make it better for the future and for his family and his children. Pancreatic cancer has also surpassed breast cancer as the third leading cause of cancer-related deaths, and it needs the awareness that breast cancer has gotten in the past so that it can get early detection tests and help people have better survival rates. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is to commemorate Veterans' Day and to honor the service and dedication of all U.S. veterans.
And I'd like to invite Commander Selinda Sanchez, I think I said that right, Sherlinda, Vice Commander Gilbert Guera, and Secretary Robert Stricker. Come up to the podium. And Mayor Protem Floyd Klock has the proclamation.
Welcome, Commander Sanchez, Vice Commander Guera, and Secretary Stricker. We appreciate you being here to accept this proclamation today, and it's my honor to be able to read it on behalf of all veterans. Proclamation. Whereas we observe Veterans' Day as a day to honor all United States service members of generations past and present. Their courage and patriotism must never be forgotten, and whereas American citizens live in freedom because of the personal contributions and sacrifices made by courageous men and women who served in the U.S. Armed Forces. We will endeavor to always honor the service members who have served with great distinction and valor. And whereas America's veterans have placed our nation's security before their own eyes, creating a debt that we can never fully repay, our veterans represent the best of America, and they deserve the best America can give them. And whereas the city of Saginaw is proud to recognize our veterans and extend our appreciation to those who have served and to those who currently wear the uniforms of the United States Armed Forces, preserving freedom and liberty for all. Now therefore, be it resolved, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, do hereby extend our sincere gratitude to remember our veterans on Veterans' Day. In the city of Saginaw, and urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the outstanding contributions and commitment that all United States veterans have made to the city of Saginaw. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this first day of November in the year of our Lord 2016. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor, Councilpersons Floyd Klock, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Daniel Fitzpatrick, John Humphreys, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs. Signed, also Timothy Morales, City Manager. Please step forward and accept the proclamation.
of Saginaw everywhere, I want to thank you for this proclamation. It really says a lot for you to recognize all the veterans, and especially for the American GI Form. So, thank you very much.
And Mayor, next, going off the agenda just a little bit, we have a very special proclamation presentation. I do refer this back to you.
Please. And with great honor and privilege, I'd like to present this proclamation. Whereas the city, the Saginaw City Council is proud to recognize Daniel Fitzpatrick for his passion, commitment, and dedication to our city, and the many contributions he had made in the lives of families and individuals throughout the Saginaw community. And whereas Dan Fitzpatrick, who lived in Saginaw for almost 50 years and is devoted to this community, Dan is a proud graduate of St. Stephen's High School in Saginaw and a former student of Saginaw Valley State University. Dan was employed with AT&amp;T for 33 years, where he served as a technician for 15 years and as a general office manager for 17 years. And whereas Dan Fitzpatrick was elected to Saginaw City Council in 2007 and has faithfully served the citizens of Saginaw for the past nine years, Councilman Fitzpatrick has worked on several influential committees throughout this city since assuming office, including serving as a board member on the MBS Airport Commission and with the Housing Board of Appeals. And whereas Councilman Fitzpatrick is a truly dedicated leader, working actively in many areas to benefit our community, Dan was instrumental in passing the dangerous dog ordinances to require greater responsibility for pet owners in the city and increase safety for citizens in our neighborhoods. Dan was also an active member of the Friends of Hoyt Park group that labored diligently to preserve and maintain the historic park in downtown Saginaw. And whereas Dan Fitzpatrick is a man who values faith, family, and his community. He and his wife Kathy have five children and are now the proud grandparents of three lively grandchildren. And I'm going to stop right there because I, without looking up, I believe we're talking eight, 11 grandchildren. Well, they must have printed this up last week. But we have 11, 11 lively grandchildren. Dan and Kathy are active members of St. Helens Catholic Church in Saginaw. Dan has served as a big brother mentor, taking the time to mentor and guide area youth to overcome obstacles and reach their full potential in life. And whereas Daniel Fitzpatrick has set the example for others as an exemplary council member and citizens whose enthusiasm and dedication have helped to improve the quality of life for many in the city of Saginaw, we give honor and recognition this day for the deep commitment of Daniel Fitzpatrick to empower, enlighten, and encourage others. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members and the citizens of this community, do hereby extend this expression of our extreme appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Daniel Fitzpatrick for serving over the past nine years as a member and a leader of the Saginaw City Council and for the positive impact he has made in our community. We honor Mr. Fitzpatrick and extend our very best wishes for continued success in all of his future endeavors. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this first day of November in the year of our Lord 2016. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor, Councilmembers Floyd Klock, it's Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphreys, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and our city manager Timothy Morales. Councilman Fitzpatrick, you're going to be missed at this table, but you have served this community well, and we are so honored to have and been a part of, have you a part of all this, and we congratulate you. And if you would come around, I think you need to accept this. personable City of Saginaw flag. If you'd like your own, please. Did all recipients have an opportunity to say a few words, or you can wait till your remarks?
How about if I use them both right now? I, wow, this is a day I was looking forward to and yet dreading. And I thank you very much, Mayor and Council and Manager Morales, for this. I, and I want to thank the staff, especially of our city, the great directors, and I actually see one of them sitting in the back tonight. He was here with his neighbors, Tom Darnell, who I worked with for a number of years when he was Director of Public Works for the city. And I also want to thank all those others who are here and have really come to respect and admire both your professionalism and also your friendship. You know, when it all is said and done, it's a small town, you know? I was trying to think earlier about how many different council people I've sat with at this table just in nine years. I think it's between 18 and 20, something like that. But I, this has been, this has just been great. With every new council person and, you know, we have a lot of rotation that goes on, a lot of revolving doors because of people's changing lives and tragedies that happen, and also people moving on to other, other callings. But I just want to say that it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with every single one of you and to, to have been honored to be able to serve the city council all these years. And I also want to thank my wife for being here, Catherine, and our five children and 11 grandchildren. It's true, we have lots of them born, like, you know. Anyway, also want to, you know, we, we just honored veterans and Kathy's family, my wife Catherine's family, the Kennels, also related to the benches, the Isigs. But, you know, there's been a lot of them who have served this country and some who have paid the ultimate price. And especially, you know, over at the Veterans Plaza, BRICS, we have honored them. One in particular, Bill Kennel, prisoner of war during World War II in the Philippines from the surrender of Baton. Right through three years, he was in the Kataban Death Camp, I would call it. It was prisoner of war camp, but it was pretty bad. Anyway, but he didn't survive until the end of the war. He didn't survive to come home. And just how that affects the family and, number one, how proud they are of him and of other family members and of all of you who have, from our community, who have served and so on, to thank you and take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you, thank you. You know, I actually written some, some things down, but again, it's just been fantastic to be a part of this. Now, with the, the elections this year, and the dates and the times and all that kind of being a little different, quite often we've had city council meetings like the night before elections, so it's like now you're, okay, some people are done, some people are just coming on, but, but it's a little different this year because of all the, in the last couple of years, we've had some real changes that have happened. And I just want to say that I'm going to, to make a prediction about this election, okay? And Mr. Milne is here right now. I predict that he will win. You'll see. And I also want to congratulate in advance some folks who really come to like and respect. To my left here, Mr. Tibbs, Annie, God bless you, love you. Thank you. Mr. Klock and Mr. Bryant. And it, I will be endeavoring to be here at the next meeting. And it, I will be endeavoring to be here at the next meeting so that I can watch you all be sworn in and congratulate you right then and there. And I wanna thank Mr. Morales for being such a great manager. When it came time to choose a new manager, there was a lot of, oh, different opinions, but I am glad to say that you have met and exceeded expectations for myself certainly and I think for other council members as well. And hopefully you're gonna be in that seat for a long time. You don't have dreams of going elsewhere either, but, I see people going here, here. So, I don't know, gee. God bless you all and God bless this city, City of Saginaw. And pray for folks who are fighting cancer. God bless you for coming here and for asking for our support and recognition. And that concludes my remarks.
And council members, you'll have a chance during our regular council remarks to make comments to Councilman Fitzpatrick. Appreciate that. And, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Next order would be the personal appearances, however, we had none filed for tonight's meeting. And we will move on to remarks of council.
And council members, just to remind you, we have a five-minute time limit on remarks. So we begin with Councilwoman Annie Bench.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. I would like to say thank you to our veterans, to our proclamation recipients here tonight. Thank you for being here, but thank you especially to our veterans for your service. You know that it's not just you who serve our country, your entire family comes right along with you for what is a lifelong commitment regardless of how long your actual term of service is. And thank you. Thank you for the contributions you've made to our city, to our country. I am not someone who would ever want to enlist and as someone who would never want to do that, I'm extremely grateful that there are people brave enough out there to go and do that so, you know, people like me can live at home in peace and in freedom. So, thank you very much. To the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, thank you so much for bringing attention and awareness to this. I am so sorry that this tragedy has struck your family in such a significant way. I know that my neighbor who we lost was next door to us for the last ten years was also diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, and I think it was with his diagnosis that I even really learned, you know, anything about it. And you are right, it deserves the kind of attention that other illnesses get. So thank you so much for your efforts and God bless you all. And of course, Dan. We haven't always, you know, C9 to I on things, but I have come to, well, I've always respected you, but I have come to care about you a great deal. And, you know, we are technically family. So, you will be missed. Thank you so much for everything you have done for the city, for me as a council member. You've shared valuable information with me and you will be missed very much so, and I mean that sincerely. And well, I guess this would be technically several of our last meeting in our first term as council members. So I just wanna say thank you to the citizens for the opportunity to have served over the last five years and to thank the staff and just my fellow council members for being such a great group to work with. And that's all I have.
Councilman Don Tipp?
I'm thanking Mayor. I guess I would like to reiterate several of the things that Councilwoman Bench said. You know, my grandfather, he was a, who I was raised by, actually, he was a World War II veteran and, you know, he almost died during, while serving. And I grew up listening to how that happened as well as all the various places he had fought, and he was a tremendous man. He, in addition to raising his grandson, who, that would be I, he also raised seven daughters. So, it's just a character that he showed and a great deal of it is due to his service and how he served his country as well as served his family. So, I definitely had a great appreciation for our veterans. Thank you for sharing your awareness about pancreatic cancer. That's something, you know, thank God hasn't struck my family personally, but, I mean, it's such a scourge on our population, it's kinda hard not to be affected by it and, you know, I just admire your courage for being here and it's just a great example of a family, how much your wife supports you and it's a great example of how most of our citizens with families should support other family members and our city would be in a much, it's a good place, but it'd be in a lot better place if we just loved one another and respected another as family should, and thank you for being that example. Thank you for those, the proclamation for recycling. I guess another personal experience is my nine-year-old, he's into recycling, let's put it like that. He goes to Handley and they champion recycling and I can't throw away anything without him reviewing it and seeing if I'm putting it in the right place. So, you are definitely having an impact on my kid and probably other kids as well. I know this Bench kid's go to my kids' school as well, so I'm sure she's likely impacted. See, I don't think I was elected at the last go-around, but I too would like to thank the staff and they were always very professional and very thorough in everything that they did and I wanna thank you for that. And the city's in a good place and will be in a good place. You have an awesome leadership, very experienced and attuned. So, yeah, I think what we did as a council, we didn't over-manage it, yes, or try to over-manage at least. I mean, you got a very talented staff and I'm sure whatever happened next week, Saginaw would be in a good place. Only one other thing I'd like to add is, and the only reason I'm bringing this up is 'cause I think it's historical. Well, let me, or Dan? Let me get to that. Yeah, well, I, thank you for being an example for me. You know, I think we did, actually, I see a lot of things. You know, your passion for parks and your passion for the church and just the poignant questions that you asked as far as relationship to spending and being fiscally responsible and educating the public on that. And this is not a job that you get any training for, you just kind of emulate those who've been here before you and you've been, and you definitely were a great example for that and I appreciate it. And just one last thing. This was the 50th anniversary for a group called Question Mark and the Mysterians. And they had this lunch here, which I'm sad I missed, but maybe since we're in a proclamation move, maybe we should think about doing a proclamation for this group that, what, number one on the US Billboard Hot 100 chart? And I know several of our residents has mentioned this band to me and surprised that they don't have some type of recognition in the city. So, it's something to think about. But, thank you, Mayor.
Please, just, I wanna just, I just wanna put a correction there 'cause John Stemples probably scratched his head saying, "I never saw him at any of those meetings." But it wasn't the Housing Board that I was on, it was the 911 Board of Directors for a number of years. The other one's also correct, but just so John isn't like, "What the heck? I don't remember him being on that." Anyway, for that and also, thank you. And as far as Question Mark and the Mysterians, I did think about that, you know? It's Sammy, Sammy Alvarez, is that it? Okay, right, who was the, was the lead singer? It was a hit for, I mean, I was in high school when that hit, so, I mean, I know that that's, that was big and, well, we were really proud that it was Saginaw, so, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanna thank everybody for joining us here tonight in council chambers and to recognize Mid-Michigan Waste Authority. That's something that our community desperately, if you look at some of the communities along the I-75 corridor, you see some of the issues that they're going with. So thank you for the work that you guys do. I think oftentimes it probably goes unnoticed, but thank you for the work that you do. Also, for those who accepted the proclamation on behalf of pancreatic cancer, thank you guys as well for joining us. It means a lot for us to be able to do something like that and to recognize that. Also, to Gil, thank you guys so much for joining us this evening. It's our honor to recognize the service of the men and women of this community and our country who really are willing to give the ultimate sacrifice, so that means a lot of hope. I'll see you guys this weekend. I sit on the board of Saginaw County Veterans Memorial Plaza, and we have an entire weekend of events. On Friday, Veterans Day, we're gonna be doing a recognition ceremony at 11:00 a.m., and then there's gonna be a 5K run walk the following day. So if anybody in the city of Saginaw would like to join, you can go to www.scbmp.org and get more information about that. Also, Councilman Fitzpatrick, it's been a pleasure, it's been a short time, but it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you over the last few months and also to your wife as well. I think a lot of times, everyone thinks that being a council person is glamorous and exciting, and I think there are times that it can be fun, but there's some times when it's not, and that really is a true test of a person's character. Also, when they get the phone calls at 3:00 a.m. and they're asking why, you know, Mid-Michigan Waste Authority, why are we paying such a high bill or why is my water bill so high? You know, nine years of service is nothing to, it's everything to celebrate, so we just wanna thank you for your service and the time that I've had the opportunity to work with you and look forward to your service still in our community, I know, on boards and commissions and several other things, but that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You know, we're gonna repeat the same thing over and over again. You got one more person to go, but I need to echo. My hat, shout-out goes to the waste management and for the family in the back. I would love to take part in the pancreatitis, whatever you need to do, I can give you my card, please don't hesitate to call me. I know I've had family members that have died from it, and I know, you're right, it is not talked about. Cancer, breast cancer, ovarian cancer, everybody thought that one, but it is now creeping up on people, and so whatever I can do, please let me know. My veterans, I had a dad, a granddad, brothers, and son who served in the armed forces who did active duty in the war. Hat goes off out to all of you, thank you so much for your service. Can I do with now, Dan? You know, that's been my last thing for him for the last two meetings, and I just wanna let him know. The, I've been with you for the last three years, three years, four years, three years, but the time that I've been with you, you need to know that I have learned, listening. Councilman Bryant is right. This is not a glamorous job. It was, it's really more than I thought it was, but I enjoy it. You do get the phone calls at night, and one of the things that I admire about my fellow colleagues is that we all care, and that means a lot. I know, Dan, you got sick on us and you are well, so you need to know it, and thank you so much, Ms. Fitzpatrick, for allowing him to spend treacherously hours with us and sharing him with the city. So my hat goes up to you as well. This week has been an exciting week. Election is coming up and I have been, I have made it my charge to make sure that I stay involved, we get out to vote. I called Jen, I know she gets tired of me calling her, but I have to call her because I don't know the answers. And so I'm working on a lot of committees, so if people tell y'all they see me in the neighborhood, in the rain, even if it snows, that's true. That's true because I am out knocking on doors right now, encouraging people to get out to vote and encouraging them, if they can, to please come and vote early. It is so important, this is a critical, this is truly a critical, critical, critical election and we all need to vote. For all of my newcomer honors, you know, congratulations. We know that November 8th is the big D-Day for everybody and we'll know who's who on that day. As for the things that I did this week, I didn't do too much this week for walk. That's all I did was walk. Walk and talk, walk and talk. So, once again, Dan, my hat goes off to you. Thank you so much for the service that you've rendered with us. I truly enjoyed my stay. And can I do it now, Dan? Can I break down and cry? It is really difficult. I have watched members transition into other positions and leave us, and so it's, we sort of become a family, whether y'all know that or not. We do have our bad days, but the majority of our days are truly good, and for that, I do thank you for that. So long, buddy. I'm done.
Mayor Pro Tem, slide clock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's gonna be hard following Councilman Bench here, 'cause I wanna say some of the very same things that you've already said so many of them, so, thank you. Well, first, I wanna say good evening to everybody who's here and watching. It is a very, it's a short, a meeting that's just a week from the last one, so it won't have a lot of agenda items, but it is important because we are losing a very important member, someone who's been here nine years, and that is a long time to serve the city. So, Dan, let me add my thank you and my congratulations to you. I think if I remember correctly, I first met Dan through Saint Stephen's Church. Then I got to know Dan through Kiwanis. He was a member for a number of years, in fact, he was the past president of Kiwanis. That's been a few years ago. And then I had the opportunity, the pleasure to serve five years with him in council, so it has been a real honor, Dan, to recognize your service. Your congeniality's been really wonderful, your dedication to the city, your friendship are all very important to all of us. Kathy, thank you again for loaning him to us for these times because it clearly is a loan, you want it back now, I think so. But we aren't gonna let him go. I can name a few services, a few community organizations, a few other activities, and I think not only does he already plan on participating, but I might invite him to participate in a few more, so you might have to loan him some more. So thank you, Dan, for all your service. The Mid-Michigan Waste Authority, it is a proclamation deserved. Something came up, and I think it might have been Councilman Fitzpatrick that mentioned this, if I remember correctly, if not, he can correct me, but there was a question about fluorescent lights at a prior meeting, and I think that's a good one now that you're here for us to ask. Fluorescents, and not only fluorescents, but LED lights. We know they shouldn't go into the, no, yeah, I'm sorry. They should not go into landfills, so where should they go? And what better people to ask than our Mid-Michigan Waste Authority representatives who are here? So hopefully, in the very near future, you can give us and Councilman Fitzpatrick the answer, 'cause I think it's important. I, yeah, we can't, you can't do it at the meeting, but I think a presentation might be in order if you could do so. I also want to thank our veterans. My father was a veteran of World War II, two brothers, two of his brothers were two of my uncles, and I had three brothers who were service members, so... of my uncles, and I had three brothers who were service members, so recognizing the service of our veterans is important. Their sacrifices give us the country that we have. So, on behalf of myself, to the GI Forum, to all the veterans, to those of you who are here today, thank you. I do want to mention, Mayor Brownie mentioned this to me earlier today, I announced a landbank meeting last Monday, that was scheduled, I said, for the following Tuesday, the next day, but I had forgotten, landbank meetings are every other month, on the fourth Tuesday of every month. So, it wasn't last Tuesday, it was next month's, the fourth Tuesday of the month. I do understand that there were two people who appeared, and I hope it wasn't because of me, but it might have been, but anyway, I apologize for that, but I do want to correct that. For those who are interested in attending landbank meetings, it's every other month. Finally, I do want to remind everyone again of the charter amendments that are on your ballot, please look at the ballot. These charter amendments can be significant for the city, so we are asking that you at least turn over the ballot to the second page and vote on the ballot. With that, Mr. Mayor, I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Well, I certainly don't want to risk going through everything again, but I think some things need to, just a quick comment from me. To all our recipients of the proclamations, congratulations and thank you so much for being here and bringing things to light for us and the community. I'm very honored to have a father who served as a U.S. Marine, wounded and got Purple Heart in Okinawa, a brother, one year younger than I am, very proud to be a Vietnam veteran, and so it really strikes my heart, and it's a very special, special type Veterans Day. We pray for the healing and to find a cure for pancreatic cancer. We won't stop fighting, we have to fight every day, we have to fight this and the other cancers that keep taking these wonderful, wonderful quality of life away from people, and we certainly want to keep working on that for us. Couple of things that I really want to mention, I already mentioned that Starz on Election Day will be running absolutely free, so if you've already voted and you've never rode a Starz bus, boy, that's a good day to do it. Just jump on there and take a ride, they'll eventually bring you right back where you started, so please, please don't hesitate to that. I want to, just to remind people, the Ezekiel Public Meeting, their topic is Aim Higher, is November 6th from 3:00 to 4:30 at Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church. Calvary, is it?
New Mount Calvary.
New?
New Mount Calvary.
Okay, it's new one. New Mount Calvary Baptist at 3610 Russell Street in the city of Saginaw. Please, that is a great organization serving our community, and we just encourage you to do that. Congratulations to our new Neighborhood Association, Sure Well Association, Sure Will, and that is the Sheridan Park and the Williamson Street area over there. They hold their meetings the third Wednesday of the month at Freedom Full Gospel Church at 2259 Williamson Road. And talking about neighborhood associations, I just cannot go by without thanking the wonderful citizens for the last two nights that participated in our arson watch, both on Angels Night, because it's not Devil's Night no more, we've changed that, it's Angels Night. Absolutely no arson fires for the Angels Night, and then again, the following on Halloween. What a, and Mr. Stumpel in the back here, this is my yellow light right here, I'm churning it in. I had that on my car, driving around the neighborhoods, looking for you. Obviously, I didn't find you because you purposely hide yourself in a black, unmarked car in unlighted areas in our city, and then you wonder why people can't find you. So, but I'm hoping somebody did, but congratulations to everybody involved, every one of those people who drove around, got a Myers gas card, all the children that signed up because of the curfew thing and promised to be home, and when the volunteers stopped at their house, they got prizes, bicycles, and boy, there was just a great, great event. It's hard to improve on having zero, two days in a row, but we're going to do it again. They're going to do it again next year, and we encourage all our citizens, please come out. Well, Dan, Dan, as hard as you fought not to have the ninth year, because if you're not familiar, let me remind you that recently, we changed our election year for council members from an odd year to an even year, and in that vote, it was eight to one. And so, Dan only signed on for eight years, but he gave us nine complete total years, and I just cannot say enough about Dan. Dan and I, our families go back a long ways, we used to be neighbors on Bond Street, and I moved away, and then recently, well, not recent, for many years now, we've been neighbors again. So, even though, Dan, I'm losing you at the table here, Dan is right across the street, and you might ask yourself, why now stepping down from city council? Well, I got to tell you, with 11 grandchildren, he isn't going to have time for council anymore, because he has a wonderful family. Thank you, Dan, for all your years serving here on city council, for your personal support, for all the work you've done here, I commend you. You are truly a man of faith, and that's very strong, and in everything you do, that's reflective, and I just want to commend you for that, and just thank you for all those years that we've done together here, Dan, and I know that in the future months, as I'm getting ready and backing out the driveway, you will say, see you later, Dan, but I do know that you're very involved in the city, and you will always continue to be so. Thank you very much for your service and time, so, thank you. Madam Clerk.
We are now at reports from manager.
Thank you, and first, I want to thank the GI Forum command staff for coming to the meeting. They always come to serve when we ask so, thank you. And I'd also mention that we do have a number of our department heads who are also veterans here today, and are one of our former ones as well, so I thank them for their service, and we do have, also have a number of city staff who are still serving in the National Guard and the Reserve, so it's great that we have those active members. And Councilman Fitzpatrick, I'd again thank you for serving on council, you've been on council since I've worked for the city, so it will be a big change not to have you up there, and you've done a great job on council, and I know you've made the most of that extra year you got, so we'll, and I also know you'll keep serving on the other boards and committees and groups, be active with the city, so I know we'll see you around, and I'm sure we'll be hearing from you about the park and other issues that come up. But I'd be, I'm a little surprised here, a couple of council members say it's not a glamorous job, it looks, it looks like it, so surprised and shocked, but I also wanted to let council members know that we are extending the listing for the house known as the DeGezero House through April 15th, so there will still be an opportunity to take any offers, at this point, we haven't had any. In the next, one of the next few meetings, we'll be asking the agent who's listing it to come to council and update you on how it's being marketed and what type of interest there's been. Reason being that we have some issues with demolition dollars right now, and we would, if, we know we have the resolution or order from council to list it for the three months, and we had the previous motion to demolish the building, and I believe that would take place if there isn't any qualified purchasers. At this time, we don't have the funds available to demolish it, if we do, it would be closer to year end, and you're going to get an update at this meeting, and part of the reason why we don't have the funds available at this time, but that'll be in another minute here, because I also wanted to congratulate the arson watch and the fire department again for no, not only no arsons, but we didn't have any fires on either Sunday night or Monday night, so a great job by everyone involved. The citywide meeting that Chief Ruth holds every, last Thursday of every month, well, last Thursday, we had the meeting, and we had the presentation by Al Pac, which was very good, we had a lot of great questions, and I also want to mention, there was announcement at that meeting about a new business that opened in the neighborhood that hosted the meeting, the southwest neighborhood. It's called Eerie Custom Signs, and they're having an open house, and I think you all should have received that, but I wanted to mention because it sounds like the business owner is becoming very active in that neighborhood group, and if you don't know the location, it's at 1017 Wheeler Street, which used to be Celebration Hall, and before that, the Firefighters Hall, which we did have some issues with after-hours parties, so the neighborhood is very happy to have that business there. The open house is on Thursday, this Thursday, from 3:00 to 5:00, so if you get a chance to stop by, I think that'd be a great jester for the business owner, he's contacted our office a few times to remind us, so if you get a chance, that's an opportunity to meet one of our new business owners, and then we won't have another council meeting before the next citywide meeting, it's on November 17th, and it's hosted in the Cathedral Association at Greenhouse Center of Hope, which is 723 Emerson Street, 5:30 to 7:00. And with that, I'm going to ask John Stumpel, the chief inspector, to come up, and he's going to give you an update on 124 and 126 North Washington, which is the Arcade Building.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This won't take very long, somebody in the back, Mr. Miller, said there's a baseball game or something starting here shortly, so I'll try to move it along. 124 or 126 North Washington, the purpose of the picture here is just to give you a look from above of that building, it's the one centered with the unique facade that you see there. Just to give you a little history, Saginaw Acadia is owned by a Michigan Limited Liability Corporation, with the agent being William Irish. Building's been vacant for plus or minus 10 years, and it is adjacent to, on all three sides, to occupied properties, being TV5, TSS Architects Apartments, among others. Morning of May 16th, 2016, the fire department responded to a call of structural collapse. Myself, along with other staff, also responded to find the entire rear wall of the building actually in the TV5 parking lot. Building materials were hanging from the building that did not fall multiple stories up, the situation was extremely dangerous even after the wall collapsed. Just to give you an idea of what was left after the wall collapsed, you see the tan siding on the back of that building, which is a metal sheeting that was placed over the brick, and it's all just hanging by fasteners at the top of the roof line. Not a lot holding it there, it's a good thing that that area was protected from the wind, because that could have been, could have been very dangerous. You see our fire department ladder truck there was assisting with inspection of that, the team came together very well to deal with this difficult situation. After that, the city of Saginaw invoked the emergency provisions of the Dangerous Building Ordinance, which basically allows the city to take steps to protect the public health and safety without permission from the owner of the property. We did take immediate action to remove all of the hanging debris, loose bricks, that metal siding that you saw in the picture, that cost the city $25,000. We also secured the services of a structural engineer to recommend immediate steps and to supervise the stabilization. We felt it was necessary to have an expert dealing with an old building, multiple-story building that suffered this kind of damage, to ensure that the surrounding property owners, as well as pedestrians using the parking lot behind TV5 were safe. That was at a cost of $6,000. Gives you an idea of what it looks like after we removed all of the, I shouldn't say all of the bad stuff, because there's still bad stuff there, as you can see that from the top of the roof down, that is an old roof that was there before they put a newer roof system on, you can see that it's significantly sagging, engineers have been monitoring it, and it continues to drop on a very regular basis, creating further hazards and potential for further collapse. The owner of the building has been issued 16 citations, the owner pled responsible at the court hearings. Fines will be issued by the court upon execution of the order, which has not been signed by the judge yet, it is still pending. Additionally, the, myself and the fire marshal has issued orders to the owner to repair and otherwise make safe, comply with all of our codes, which that has not been done at this point. That being the case, no action from the owner of the property, the city has the responsibility to, again, protect the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding property owners and the public in general. We've engaged the services of William A. Kibbe and Associates to design a repair for the building, a permanent repair. The plans and our blueprints have been completed at this time. Spence Brothers has also been secured as a, to manage the repairs, manage the work of the subcontractors, as there are several, to ensure that the work is done safely, because it is a high-traffic area, a highly-used area in the city, it's a complicated project. Provide us with a complete project, the pre-construction meeting is tomorrow, which after that, the work will begin to the tune of $186,500. Work will be completed by the end of 2016. There's your total, this is why our demolition funds are not so good this year, and it's very early in the year, and I also added the cost to demolish the structure, and its entirety would exceed $400,000, which is one of the reasons that we chose the repair versus the demolish, you know, among other things, leaving a hole in that block, it is a unique building with a unique facade on the front of it, and other than the back wall, seems to be fairly structurally sound. That's all I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
John, thank you, and thank you for the team for protecting, getting on to that. I guess I did not realize that it was in that bad a shape. So, apologies for not giving more support for what you ended up having to do. Where are we going to get the rest of the money?
Well, my job is to spend the money.
Yes.
Yolanda's job to find the money. The council, every year, budgets for emergencies such as this, typically, we don't have, you know, a high-dollar one, they're usually residential properties that we deal with due to arsons or things like that. We've been very lucky in that regard, particularly during arson watch, so that's, I'm sure, a portion of... So that's, I'm sure, a portion of it. Other than that, the money people need to answer the other part of it, if they could help me out here.
Any ideas? No, not yet. No?
Money, I mean, as you know, we don't, we don't have a finance director. So I don't anticipate having one before January 1st. So that's half of the fiscal year worth of savings and fiscal services. And we'll probably need some time, but I think we'll see savings in other portions of the budget. So we'll have to transfer those funds around.
I certainly appreciate everything you're trying to do.
And I'm actually, no one wants to spend the money on the building, but $400,000 would be a lot worse. And my question really is, does that $400,000 include, were it to be demolished, stabilized the other buildings? Because obviously, that would be a huge concern. If you had to remove this one, you'd end up probably shoring up two whole other buildings, I assume, correct?
The $400,000 number is merely a guess, because you don't know what you're going to find when you remove that section in between those other two buildings. And it can very quickly turn into a bottomless money pit that, you know, makes the situation even worse.
So this was both a financial and a judgment call, then, to do it this way, spend the least amount of money to save, to protect the public?
Absolutely.
The next question is, you haven't gotten the judgment in the civil matters, civil infraction matters, yet.
Correct.
I'm assuming our council is pursuing issues of recovery for restitution and so on.
Our city attorney, we've had many, many conversations, and I'm sure she's laying out a game plan as to how to proceed. I don't want to speak for Amy, but...
I don't need any detail, and I'm assuming that's the case, just being confirmed. Thank you. That's all I ask.
I think that Councilman, Mayor Protem, asked the question. I guess my concern or question is, is that, from what I understand you saying, is that there's no contact by the owner, or he's ducking and dodging. And at the end of the day, he's probably not even living in Saginaw, which means that he ain't paying taxes. And so I guess I got a lot of concerns. I know that you're saying that it's cheaper to repair than to demo. But my question is, is we're going to end up eating all of that. Because you can't, it seems like we haven't been able to catch him or talk to him or speak to him unless you're working on that. You know, he's got 16 ordinance. I think maybe we need to clamp down. 16 is a lot. You know, for a person to have that many ordinance at one time, or is that normal? I don't know.
Well, the reason that there are 16, there were basically three or four ordinance violations. What I did for the first part of the summer is every day, I sat down and wrote four tickets. Because every day a violation exists is a separate violation. The fine compiles and increases every time you write those citations. And he did appear in court with his legal counsel. The problem that we have is, one, there was no insurance on the building. Two, the building is owned by a limited liability corporation that has no assets, other than the building. So our options are not a lot. As I stated, we will be pursuing all options to try and collect. But fact of the matter is, regardless of what we have to spend on that building in between three other viable, used buildings, occupied buildings, if this building goes through a winter, we're going to have bigger issues than we have now. We have to get that building sealed up so that it doesn't fill up with snow, ice, freeze, and continue to deteriorate and cause damage to the other buildings. In my opinion, we owe that to those businesses that are operating, that are doing what they're supposed to do, that are maintaining their buildings. And we really don't have a lot of choice in the matter at this point.
You answered my question when you just said what you said, LL. When you said LL, that's lost, loss. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tibbs?
Well, I guess I don't want to in a way sound like I'm trying to lay the blame on anyone. But I guess, because this does seem like it was an extraordinary situation that was probably somewhat difficult to anticipate. But, I mean, is there something we're looking at to possibly avoid this with other buildings?
This one was not apparent from the outside of the building. It's been vacant for a number of years. I'm not even... I know Mr. Irish had his offices in there one time. I'm not sure the reason for leaving. Maybe it was due to situations related to the building. The roof was leaking, actually, the new roof above the old roof was leaking onto the old roof, which directed all of the water to that back wall. There's no heat in the building, so freezing and thawing is likely what caused the wall to collapse over a long period of time. Walls don't just freeze from one or two years of neglect. It takes many, many years of neglect for a wall such as this to collapse. We have been looking around at an ordinance. I was in Detroit at a conference and was talking with the, I'm not sure what his title was, but he had a similar position to mine, except in the city of Detroit. They actually have a requirement for buildings that are multi-story, that are adjacent to the property line. They have to have an engineer inspect and certify that the masonry in the building is structurally sound so that it doesn't, so these types of things doesn't happen. Again, that's to protect the public. The lucky part of this is the person that had their car parked adjacent to that wall wasn't there when it fell. And we have looked at some similar ordinances that we could potentially use here in Saginaw to help with that type of thing. We do have a number of buildings that are, you know, there's zero setback from the property line. And you look up, and you see things that might look like loose bricks. And all those loose bricks are what contributes to these things happening. They don't look, they look pretty good at 35 miles an hour, but if you stop and look, you know, there's some things that need to be tended to. So yes, we have been looking at ordinances such as that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, any other questions? Well, thank you, John. We appreciate that, bringing this up to date.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, John, and I'd say, you know, we've been talking about that ordinance that John learned about. But really, the, what we can do with that ordinance is possibly revoke occupancy. That doesn't force the repair. So it's very difficult to get some of these buildings repaired, and a lot of them are vacant. And I also wanted John to present here, because I do want the public to get an idea about the costs related to some of these buildings. You know, we recently had the buildings on Genesee that the land bank owned. And I think there was a lot of misinformation out there, or inaccurate information regarding the cost to stabilize. Well, this is a stabilization issue, and it's, you can see the cost. With some of these buildings, I talked to the county treasurer. They found a lot of issues under at least one of those buildings that they demolished on Genesee. And this building that John just updated us on is more than we initially anticipated. And John can correct this if I'm not saying it right. But it appears that the back wall was built on a wood-type foundation, which rotted over the 100 years or so. It's been a building, and that's probably partially what aided in that collapse. So part of the additional cost for this building is basically putting a new foundation for that back wall as well, a concrete foundation. So you never know until you get into some of these buildings what's there, and that can really have a significant impact on the cost. So I appreciate what John's been doing in this building. And it's also a lot of times difficult to find contractors to do this work. I've had comments about how long that the building has been like that. But John's been working on that almost every day to try to get quotes and working with the engineers to monitor it and get the plan together on what needs to be done. Even right now, I think, I talked to Spence Brothers, and part of that, too, is some additional demolition of that roof back farther to make sure it's safe for the workers to work on that, building the wall. So there's a lot of planning and engineering that goes into this type of stabilization project. So thanks, John, for doing the work, and I know they'll get it done before we get too far into winter. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Mayor, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available at City Hall and on City's website and on SGTV Channel 191. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions? May move and support. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next order of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Council members, any report from any of your committees or commissions that you serve on? I know we all received an update recently of many of the boards and commissions. They're minutes, so please, if you haven't had a chance, take a look at those. Madam Clerk, we have an appointment.
Yes, we do. It's a council appointment of Bob Johnson to the Saginaw Public Library Board with a term to expire June 30th of 2017.
The motion to appoint? May move and support. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Tibbs?
Being here, I thought it was not customary for a potential appointees to be present, but he said he wanted to be here. He definitely looking forward to getting an opportunity to serve on the board. I worked with him on the board first ward, and he's a hard worker, and I'm sure many of us know him already. But he just, he does want me to say he apologized for not appearing because of, he had an immediate injury.
Being none, all in favor? Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next order of business is motions and miscellaneous business. We do have one item this evening here. It's a consideration of a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section H, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
And we need a motion?
Move to go into closed session.
Madam Clerk, real call, please.
Councilmember Bench. Mayor Protem Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Bryant. Councilmember Abson. Councilmember Fitzpatrick. Councilmember Tibbs. Mayor Browning. We have seven nearest votes.
Okay, now go into closed session.